My name is Pastor Rob Wilson. I just want to ask if you please keep me on the clock. But I want to echo my agreement with some of the council members that one, I understand there's a lot of medical advancements using this marijuana. So I'm all for finding lesser expensive ways to help treat illness. But recreational use, I'm 100% against. I'm a former user myself, 15 years before I got off of it. So I know all the effects and I smoked the stuff back in the days when it was really good, not the crap they got now. But I understand this. There's a lot of things that are legal but are not good for us, like the alcohol, like cigarettes, like vaping. You can buy a gun legally, but all of those things fall into the wrong hands at some point. There's no way to monitor and keep a track on it to make sure that these things are not misused. And so we either have the decision to say, well, hey, you know what, it's going to happen anyway, let's just do it. Or we're going to say, you know what, I'm not going to put another layer on top of the already severe issues that we face in our community. I wish that my community was here to represent themselves, but they're not. They probably would say, hey legalize it. But as a father, as a mentor, as a pastor, as I look at the issues that some of our kids are facing, I'm not saying marijuana is the issue, but it sure can help. It is just saying, I don't want to tell my daughters that, yeah, it's okay now. It's okay to do drugs. And if the only benefit that I'm hearing is financial, because if it's medical, we've got medical purposes, but if we're just talking about finances, then we just become illegal drug dealers, which we already are anyway, because the pharmaceutical industry is making billions off the passive Americans. But we can't, we cannot say it's okay. I don't, I don't agree with it being okay to become drug dealers to deal with the issue, for fun, for recreation. Medical, get the prescriptions. And I just ask this as I leave, because in the city, in the inner city, we already got a lot of crack houses.
30 seconds.
We already got all the liquor stores. We already got all the gambling spots. If you put it in dispensary, so put it in Forsyth. Put it in Mount Zion. Put it in South Shores. Because we already got everything else. We got the drugs and the hookers already.
Thank you Pastor.
Hello. I'm going to try to do this as quickly as possible and as politely as possible for the council, because this is a contentious issue. I'd like to speak on behalf of some of our advocates.
Can you please state your name for the round?
My name is Sean Schoenbrock, and most of you know me. That's where I'm going to start. David, you're my neighbor. Bill, you're my neighbor. You walk past my house going into Fairview Park every day. You take the little route right behind the tennis courts. Pat, you're my neighbor. You live right around the corner. I'm on Summit. You see me walking past Dennis all the time, and I'm as friendly to you as I possibly can be. You know, I love you guys, okay? Chuck, I used to drive for Frank Tyrell when the Alzheimer's was kicking in real hard and I was his caregiver at the last stage of his life. I brought him up to the Ursula Beck Tournament. We hang out with you for a couple of years up there, okay? Rodney, I'd like to know you. Chubby, you're breaking my heart, all right? That's, you know, just real. I worked for you on your campaign when I was helping Menar. I worked with all the Dems. I'm the best canvasser in Lake County. I understand when we got a disagreement or we got a divergence on stuff. I'm just telling you, you're breaking my heart, man, okay? All right? That's all. That's all, all right? And let me tell you why, because I'm going to tell you why this affects me personally and that resonates out to the rest of the community, okay? All right? I've been in this community for the majority of my life, other than when I lived in Colorado. I've been probably the biggest cannabis advocate that this city's seen in the last 30 years, all right? I judged a cannabis cup when I was 19 years old in Amsterdam in 1994. For those of you who know who Jack Arar was, the number one 20th century cannabis advocate that the Jack Arar strain was named after. When that strain was presented to him in Amsterdam, I was three feet in front of him. He was given the speech on why this was important, what the story of his life was, what prohibition was creating, it's a nightmare for the world and how we needed to stop it. And then he got in my face, two weeks after my 19th birthday, and said, "It's going to be you 18 and 19-year-old kids that carried this ball over the line for our older generation, because we're getting old and we're not going to be able to finish this. It's up to us." 25 years later, here I am, okay? I've been a medical coordinator in Colorado. I've been a patient. I've had cards in two states. I've helped people learn how to grow for their own medical purposes. I've helped design commercial growth facilities in Colorado, okay? I know what is biased information and what is not biased information. We're not even going to go there right now, all right? Here's the deal. Dispensaries are important. One way or another, there's going to be one in the county, and this need is going to be addressed. You need to decide whether it's going to be...
30 seconds.
Okay, okay. We're going to need to decide whether it's here or whether it's in one of the small towns, okay, first thing. Second, this large-scale production processing facility you haven't talked about, I just want to hit that real fast, because that can save my family's life. My father just died in August and has left us with a mountain of debt over in the Westside, right by your houses. I have the expertise to do this for someone else who is a backer, and you can save me from having a foreclosure on my home and having to leave your neighborhood. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Curtis Ferguson, and I want to thank all you for saying where you stand on this, because I will be voting for you, David Horne, again. And I feel that everybody's got different ideas about this. Everybody's got their own thoughts about young and old and in-between. I think that it's been illegal too long, and I think that we do need a pharmacy here in Decatur, because I have family that have to drive to Springfield, and they take it because they got strung out on opioids at the pain clinics here in Decatur. And there's been plenty of them. I appreciate what Mr. Buffett has done for this city, but I don't think, I don't think it relies on him to decide, you know? And I think that, I think that the council members here all know him very well and want to please the man, because he's given a lot of money. And I hope he continues to. And I respect him and everything, but we need a referendum on this. We need to vote for this and not let you people just decide for everybody in this town. Thank you.
My name is Carl Coleman. As many of you guys have sat here, a lot of the points at which I had had very been presented, but I feel like I'm not doing my part if I'm not speaking up. Especially as my uncle pointed out, I live in very cross proximity to at least four or five of you. I know you have worked professionally with you in different situations, whether that be public or private. And as I said, I'm pretty disappointed in some of the things that my public officials and leadership are doing here. I mean, I was listening in the car in the radio this morning, I heard a quote saying that, "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result." And this is exactly what City of Decatur has, as Mr. Don Giger spoke to, the mall. That's one right there. Any of the other, you know, similarly... I'm going to stay on message, because I could get off, I could get off track here. But a couple of things I want to speak to. So I read in the paper of the day that this council was elected by 18% of the electorate. Yeah, you're going to make the decision for everyone as to whether or not cannabis is going to be, you're sitting in the city, which is peddling in my opinion. So that's the first point. The second point is... Sorry, this is kind of frustrating, it's the way I'm even sitting here having to speak in front of you people like this, because this shouldn't be like that. But like I said, 80% of the electorate here, so how about you presented to the people, as some people have said before. And you know what democracy means, it means it's left to the people. This is, we need to have a democratic public, so we should actually, you know, emphasize our democratic principles and allow the public to speak on this issue. I'm sure that if you've left it up to the public, you'd get the answer that you hear. It's been presented by most of the people here in this room. So, and another point I have to point out, and this is great, we have a lot of respect for you, I've known you, suffered capacities at Richland Public as well. But the thing you said when it comes to crashes and such, it's disgusting to me. I mean, leadership should have the foresight and understanding to be ahead of the curve when it comes to the general public and their things. You should not be behind things. You should be able to do the research and have the understanding to perform, do what you need to do as leadership. And it's the exact opposite of what had, in fact, you presented biased and fake information, where some people have been known to do here. So the state of Colorado, which is the first state to legalize marijuana, is well in addition to other states. They did a study published in American Journal of Public Health by the University of Texas. Awesome. Which resulted in the fact that there's been a slight increase in traffic fractions and uh, altercations of the nature in the state of Colorado. But that can not at all be contributed to the legalization of marijuana. As we said, as both the state and the state of Illinois also, there are different other changes in the law which came to the effect there. So if you were to present the argument, the argument in a very uncontextual sense, this is wrong, I think you should do better. And as I said, election's not around the corner, so I mean, step up, let's do something different. I mean, the civil is out, so.
My name's Michael Hartwig. I'm a lifelong resident of Illinois, most of my life, in Decatur. I went to Millikan University in the late 60s, you know? There was a little pot around on Millikan University. And most of the people I know that smoked a joint now and then, but just kind of laid back and easygoing. So I thought that's what it's about. Well, back in January, I'm making a trip to Quincy, which I do every week, and I had Campbell X on. And Charlie Brennan in the morning had a guy, an author on that he interviewed. That author's name was Alex Berensen. Alex is a graduate of Yale University, not exactly a conservative bastion. He wrote for the New York Times, again, not exactly a bastion of conservativity. And he had kind of the same, eh, laissez-faire attitude about marijuana. His wife is a clinical, not psychologist, psychiatrist. And just in casual conversation with her one evening, he said something about the medical thing and no big deal. She said, "Are you kidding?" She says, "I see people every, every day who are abusers," granted, they're abusers, "that have severe psychosis, schizophrenia." So he said, "Maybe this is something I should study." So he went back and looked, and he went clear back, he says, "He was like me, I thought pot came from Mexico." No, pot was prevalent in India in the 1800s. The British were very good about keeping records. Clear back then, they were documenting people who had psychosis, schizophrenia, that was induced by the marijuana. People are talking here about medical. I don't have an issue with medical. I think it should be sold at Walgreens, not at some dispensary. Recreation, you say, we're talking about the taxes. Well, the state of Illinois, as near as I can recollect, is probably the second state in the Union as far as going broke. And they've raised taxes, they've raised taxes. And people my age, I'm staying in Illinois, I've got seven grandkids here, I have a job here. If they move, I'm gone. I'm gone. We talk about people self-medicating, you know?
30 seconds.
Why would you want to do that? Let's look at jobs in Decatur. Every week I hear Brian Byers talk about, "There's a thousand jobs in Decatur we can't fill." I'm sorry.
Ma'am.
Can't, a thousand jobs we can't fill, because people can't pass the drug test. That ain't going to change.
My name is John Howgie. I want to remind the council, the reason we have a council is to allow you guys to take a tempered view of everything and not be overly influenced by a large vocal influence of people. And I've been to city council meetings where I've listened to hours of pothole complaints and administrative court complaints, and there's nobody that wants your jobs, so you guys are safe. But I have done, I did read one book about this issue back in the 80s. It was written by David Crosby about his experience. And if anyone would read that, you would opt, you would vote to opt out.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Devin Stevens.
My momma, please. Could we let the gentleman speak without being interrupted? Thank you. You may begin again.
My name's Devin Stevens. Everybody's kind of came up here and gave a pretty solid reason on why we need dispensaries, et cetera, in Decatur. So I'm going to speak a little bit on some other things that Mr. Brown and Mr. Getz had to say in their weird, horrible 1987 Ronald Reagan-style anti-drug propaganda video. The concern about the accidents, fatalities, et cetera, in states like Colorado, Oregon, and all that, that was mentioned by Mr. Getz, Mr. Brown, and Ms. Gregory. What they failed to mention there is all of those states also have a 25% to 30% increase in population since legalization. The, Mr. Brown also had a concern about people walking around with bags of money to get to the dispensaries. I don't know if any of you have been to Colorado, but it's 2019, they accept plastic. The two shootings that Mr. Getz mentioned that happened over marijuana, those were street, illegal street purchases in an unregulated, unsafe facility. Give us a safe place, a regulated place, a legal place to buy our product, and things like that won't happen. Everything that was stated in that video, and 99% of what you guys stated, is propaganda that has really no backing at all. And it's, it's just kind of, it's kind of sad. I mean, there's, there's no evidence that states to back anything what you guys are saying. It's all hearsay, and it's all stuff that marijuana legally, marijuana can't physically do to you. It's the laws against marijuana that are bad that you guys are saying, so.
Hi, I'm Neil Drazen. The one thing that comes to mind is the fact of drug addiction. I've got, my, my, my right arm is full of friends that have died from drug addiction. I'm a recovering heroin addict myself. I don't usually come out and say that, but I'll, I'll say it today, and an alcoholic. I've been making a living off of selling alcohol for over a decade. I know what it does in large amounts. I've witnessed a friend of mine get killed pretty much right in front of me, five minutes after I talked to him, you know, due to gambling machines, other things of the nature. And then when you start thinking of a plan, that is something that's traditional Indian medicine, no one here studied it. So we're talking about a war on drugs, which kind of failed, I think. But I think when we start looking at some of the things that we're trying to fight as far as addiction, you might, we have to start looking at things that are addictive. And there are some things that aren't addictive, that are medicine, whether you use it once a day, twice a day, three times, four, five. And, you know, I personally, every car accident I've ever gotten to, I've been sober. Never been drunk, and never been on smoking cannabis. I've provided places for professional musicians in Springfield, Illinois for six years. The majority of them don't want to drink alcohol. The majority of them want to know where they can get a little medicine, and that's what they call it. So I just think we, we need to look at, it's coming, and it's here. And there's nothing really we're going to be able to do. But I do like what Chuck said. I thought about what Chuck said, because yeah, it is coming, it's going to be here. How's it going to shake down? How's it going to pan down? But it's coming. But it would be nice for the people that do use it, because it's here. Just like beer. You don't want to go to someone's garage to go get a drink, or try to find this guy. You want to go have a drink. You know what I mean? And deal with somebody like that, or whatever it may be. You know what I mean? I don't want to deal with it. I've been to Colorado, I lived in Boulder, Colorado for six years, from 1992 to 1998.
30 seconds.
I mean, if any of you have been to Colorado, you look at the state, man, come on. Come on. The homeless people got North Bay's cold on, with signs. Same guys, I've seen them, man, for years. I mean, when you look at, you know, there is a problem with drugs, certain drugs, because we all do drugs. We all do drugs. I just wish we would all understand, we all do drugs. But just, there's some that aren't good, and there's some that if you do too much, they're not good for you. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anita Clark.
I'm glad somebody finally did mention the homeless issue in Colorado. I was there this summer, and I was also at a wedding where pot's legal and people were smoking, and I have allergies, and I think the least they could have done was be downwind, but they weren't. I came out of there horrible. First thing, this state passed this legal thing, pot's legal, without a referendum. The people, we are the only state that did it, talking about lightning speed. They didn't ask everybody, they just did it. And they did it because it's a way to get more revenue, all right? They are using the pot issue to get money, and the people who smoke pot are real excited about that, because yay, we get it now, okay? But there are problems with pot. I have medical personnel in my family. I was over at the house babysitting, and, you know, the only thing that's around to read is medical journals. So I read one of them, and there was a multi-page article talking about how the pot affects children's brains. And a developing brain does not recover from the damage that pot does. That isn't a medical journal, okay? There was also this wonderful article in the Illinois Times, which is such a progressive art, if anybody's read it, they know. But it was like a six or seven-page thing, and they were talking about how Pritzker was like, "Oh yeah, this is a way to help all those little farmers, and this is going to be a great way to get all these little people to make money." No, it's not. Okay? If you read that, the fees and regulations are so high, if you want to do this, that unless that one guy has a lot of money to pay $150 for the application fee, and then God knows what, you're not going to be able to do it. So that was just a big lie. Speaking of lies. Yeah, I know, but it's all for the big guys, and I was quiet when you talked.
Yeah, let's let the speaker speak, please.
All right. I have no problem with medical marijuana. I have a cousin who has chronic migraines, and that is something that would fix it for her, and it's impossible for her to get it, okay? Illinois needs to be more friendly towards medical marijuana.
Yes.
Okay? Not recreational stuff, all right? I feel like the government is using, we're going to give you pot because everybody wants it, but really it's making us money, okay? But basically, they just want to dummy everybody down, make them all mellow.
30 seconds.
Let us do what I want.
30 seconds.
I better hurry up then. Okay, we already know that, I remember reading after Colorado legalized it, that if it hurts one child, we're going to drop it. Well, the increased number of children going into the emergency room because of medical, or because of pot exposure and ingestion has increased phenomenally, all right? We're willing to, are you guys willing to have medical, or not medical marijuana, recreational pot, even though there's no way you're going to keep it away from the kids, just like alcohol gets exposed to children?
And your time is up.
Are you willing to risk your children? I know, I just wanted to think...
Hey, you know, you may speak at the microphone. We're going to have order here. We're not going to be arguing across the chambers.
We already have...
Ma'am, your time is up.
Let's not increase it by pot.
Order, please. Thank you. Clear and clear.
Hi, my name is Allen Burkey. And basically, as of, what, 4 o'clock today, I still didn't know if I was going to show up, and I definitely did not plan to speak. So I was born and raised in Decatur. I am, I went to Stephen Decatur when it was still a high school. So I've been around. I grew up with people where I work now, they wouldn't even believe, like, the people that I grew up with. And I'm lucky, and I'm privileged, and I got to go to college, as I, I imagine most of you got to do. And I watched a lot of my friends fall behind me financially. Well, what I heard is, is a couple of arguments here, where that there are over like 200 jobs in Decatur currently. What I would like, what'd you say?
1,000.
1,000? Have you looked at what those jobs are? Have you looked at if those jobs are enough for a person to feed their family, to take care of a family? Because we, I am lucky enough to go get a really good job. I could support a family, but most people in Decatur can't. And those jobs that they're going to get might not be jobs that they can use to actually support a family and still be able to spend time with them. I've looked at jobs all over the place. I teach high school, so I like to keep informed. A lot of jobs are with the train station, and I don't know if you've looked at the test to get to be a train conductor, but it's incredibly difficult. Being a train conductor, or even a truck driver, takes people away from their families. So I've also heard an argument that says this is a family-friendly town. Well, how is, how is that okay? You know, if we're not giving them jobs where they can be with their families? So I guess my point is, if we're going to use that as an argument, you know, and I don't know if a marijuana dispensary is going to be the answer, but please don't use that as an argument unless these are jobs that people in this town can actually get and use and become better people and have a better life. A lot of the community-centered jobs, are those going to be jobs that require advanced social work degrees and other advanced degrees? Are these going to be jobs that regular people can get? And I guess those are just my questions. It's not really an argument, but I want people to think about that, and I want people to look into it and see. Because we're privileged, but not a lot of people here are.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, City of Decatur. My name is Jeffrey Roth, and I drive cars for a distributor here in Decatur. And I travel every day from different parts of central Illinois, as far south as St. Louis, as far north as Chicago. And I think I can come up with an agreement from everybody here, that our highways are very dangerous. We have literally thousands of people dying in our country, on our highways and byways. Just today, I had a delivery in Monticello, and going westbound on 72, halfway between Arjana and Monticello, there was a severe wreck. The wreck happened before I got there, but I was going east, they had westbound tied up for five miles. A helicopter had to come in and land, and I'm sure there was some very devastation there. But my question to everybody is this. By legalizing marijuana, is that going to help the safety on our highways and our byways?
Yes.
I don't understand how, because I, I smoked marijuana myself when I was a teenager, and it inhibited me. It inhibited my judgment. My judgment was off-base. And that's what it does to people. It impairs you. It impairs your judgment. And I don't want another opportunity for somebody else to go out here and drive on honest highways with impaired judgment. It doesn't help the situation, it makes it worse.
Sir, if you could be quiet over here.
And I would ask the council to do their duty and their responsibility, and take up the sheriff's association's side of this to opt out of a dispensary here in Decatur in Illinois. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No, no comments from the gallery. We're going to stick with our microphones here.
Can I come down there again?
We're going to let everybody else who hasn't spoken yet have their opportunity, because you had your three minutes. Ma'am, glad?
My name is Tanya Andricks, and I run Crossing Healthcare. And I just wanted to take a few moments to, first of all, thank everybody here tonight who shared their opinions. And all it's really done for me is to reinforce what I think we already know intuitively, and that is we form our opinions based on our own personal experience. And there's a lot of people here who've had experiences with pain and felt some relief with marijuana, and they're speaking of that, and they've run into barriers getting medical marijuana. There's a lot of really very real pain and trauma that underpins a lot of people's opinions. And so I don't envy the council for having to think through this and make a decision, because I know it's very difficult. But along with those experiences come the experience of folks like myself, who've been in healthcare since the 90s, and folks like the law enforcement professionals that have weighed in on this issue. And every day, we try to do our jobs in a way that's compassionate and caring, and we see the things and the roadblocks that come into people's ways, and we see the, the starting of issues that develop for other people. And I know there are people here in this audience who have, who are using marijuana and haven't seen significant issues that have come from that. But we've experienced far different endings to those stories. And so we represent the people that can't be here to tell... And so we represent the people that can't be here to tell those stories. And so I know this is an emotionally charged issue, and I don't wanna stand here and give a strong statement that sort of disregards the pain and the, and the experiences that are represented here by people who have a different opinion than me. All I will tell you is, is that from my experience and from the experience of my colleagues, we know that access to marijuana can cause significant issues, especially in developing brains, especially for children. It can cause impairments that can lead to other decisions that have very tragic outcomes. And I think it's important that in a city where we're working very hard to revitalize neighborhoods and empower our youth to have a different outlook on life, it's very important right now to send a right message to the rest of the community to keep the access of these things that can cause significant issues at bay. And so I hope the council will consider opting out.
Thank you.